I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for the board call?
Chair.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Mark Schaub.
Here.
Dan Asta.
Here.
John Boyle. And I count Andrew Tomcetson.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. And number four, the board reorganization to elect a chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheriff.
It's my honor to nominate Robert Bishop for vice chair of the Dalton Select Board.
Second. Motion is second. Yeah. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Fully supportive. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Maybe next year, if you need a break.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. And Mr. Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, it's my honor to nominate yourself for chairman of the board for another term.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain from that, but thank you and looking forward to serving another term, double the year.
I'm not done amusing here.
There's no minutes on the agenda. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial, respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and please be concise. We're meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please try to attend in person. Thank you. Anybody wishing to address the board? Seeing none in the room? Anything on Zoom? Okay. Number seven, appointment ratifications. Mr. Jason Dion as plumbing/gas inspector effective May 23rd, 2022, pending pre-appointment physical. Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, very pleased to present Mr. Dion. He is currently the alternate plumbing and gas inspector and head of the buildings for the Central Berkshire Regional School District. He's also served on our Emergency Management Advisory Committee for some time. And I had a talk with him, with our building commissioner last week. And I urge you to ratify his appointment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Jason Dion as plumbing/gas inspector effective May 23rd, 2022, pending a pre-employment physical.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for the great work at the school. Fantastic, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything we do to help you out, let us know, but yeah, great. Waste Management and Recycling Committee membership. Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, I think it's time to revise the structure of the committee. When Jane Smith was here, she had very particular expertise in waste management and recycling that our current health agent does not. And there's really not much reason for the current health agent to be on the committee as we do have another board of health representative, Ed Gira. So I'm proposing in two steps to remove that position and to add an at-large position.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to remove the Dalton Health Agent and add an at-large representative to the Waste Management and Recycling Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Anything else on that item, Ms. Hutchinson? That's all you need for that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Number nine, it's all town hall construction update. Is that Ms. Hutchinson? Oh, Pat. Mr. Pat.
So where we stand right now is where we have moved over, one, two, three offices have been moved over, or four offices have been moved over to the building across the street, the old Berkshire Bank. So those are complete. The IT work over there is complete with the exception for any other offices that'll move over afterwards. But the, pretty much the whole setup is complete over there. The bat renovation, that is now complete, or the bat excursion is complete. The one-way doors were put in place, I believe it was May 1st or May 2nd. So any bats that are moving around now that go out to feed don't come back into the building. So that's all completely secured, so that is all set. We are running into a few delays with the engineering process as some questions came up asking if the interior walls, the supporting walls, were going to be efficient enough to hold up the new weight that's going to be presented with any storage or possible offices up there. So there's been a little bit of holdup in that. Do have a meeting with a structural engineer to go through the building tomorrow at 1:00. So once they go through the building, make their determination on whether or not the walls are structurally sound enough to hold that weight, then we can move forward from there. If they are not, then we'll have to get some new design plans, which obviously with doing more work could cause for additional funds that will be needed. Right now, there's been a few things that have come up that are causing us to have, need more funds. One of the things would be, we weren't planning on the bats. When we first started doing this, we didn't realize that we're in the building. The additional extra IT work that we were not expecting is when we did take over that building, got a view of it, the company that was in there before decided just to cut all the lines. So we had to redo some of the infrastructure in there, which took more time and more funds than we were originally expecting to get it up and running. So, and with the additional two rooms now, where the two offices that we moved out immediately when the frost was coming out of the ground or when we had some high winds in the spring, had caused some shifting in the building, which caused some more, which caused some fairly large cracks in the plaster in those two offices. There was some shifting going on. So now we have to renovate those two offices as well before we can move anybody back into those offices. So there's two offices that are going to be, they were put on as an alternate, but we can't put anybody back into the building because the, or into those two offices because the plaster has broken free on all the walls and a lot on the ceilings. So, you know, I'll leave the major part of the financials up to the town manager when he gets to number 13. But due to some of these, has increased the cost along with, as everybody is seeing, the demand on materials and everything, all those prices have really escalated. The fuel has escalated. So this is probably going to, without, I won't have definite figures until I meet with the structural engineer tomorrow. We wouldn't have definite figures right away, but it does look like with all these additional things that have happened, it's going to increase our costs more than we had expected. So other than that, all the plans that I've received from the engineers have been what we've asked them to do, except for the exception, like I mentioned, is we need to make sure the structural integrity of the walls in town hall are okay. And we have the two additional offices that we weren't expecting to have to do. So.
Pat, I know you're experiencing this. Is Brian Duvall involved in any of this?
Yes, the structural part was, he had asked some questions about the walls because it wasn't listed on the prints whether they could handle the new loads. So that was one of his questions that he asked. We met a couple of weeks ago with Tom and went over the plans when they came in. So Brian had some questions for him, and that was one of the largest questions, is whether or not the walls could handle that. So that's something I just won't know until after tomorrow or when they tell us anything.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, Pat. Any other questions? Ask them down.
If I may, just to bring in some of the figures, the original cost of, well, the original plan for asbestos abatement did not include taking down all of the ceiling in the old opera house and the upper part of the walls, the majority of the walls. That's now, that was an added $30,000 before we found the need for the two extra offices to have that plaster removed as well. So that's going to be more. And the bats were about $30,000 as well. So with those two things, that's $60,000. The additional requested amount for the special town meeting would also include the, Pat, you can help me out here if you can. The walls, I think, would need, or we're, we're thinking that they might need to be stripped of their sheet rock and additional vertical supports put in because the current vertical supports are two feet apart, you know, and really 18 inches is the standard. So we would have to add vertical supports in the second floor walls if that's what's needed for the weight to support any real activity on the third floor. So as long as we're doing this work, you know, we need to prepare for the eventual use of the third floor. So if we need that, I don't know that we have an estimate for how much that would be, Pat.
No, there's no estimate. That's why I said I'd have to wait to speak to the structural engineer to see if that was going to be needed or not. And that's what, as far as I know, that's what Brian was waiting for too, is to hear what the structural engineer would have to say about whether additional supports would be needed. So without having an official word from the structural engineer, I didn't want to comment on that, just because I haven't been told anything yet whether we would need additional work or whether we wouldn't. But if we do need additional work, yes, the cost would definitely elevate because to put in additional supports, to have them properly fastened to the bottom and top plate, the sheet rock on the interior of the town hall for the structure walls, for anything that was the load-bearing walls, which is the sides of the hallway going downtown hall are load-bearing walls. So those would have to be stripped of sheet rock, re-rocked, taped, painted. So that would have to be additional funds for that. But I just didn't want to speculate on something that I haven't spoken with a structural engineer on to say whether or not we needed that or not. So hopefully I have that information tomorrow afternoon. If not, I'm sure they'll get back to us, hopefully within a few days.
And then the additional costs would be the additional costs in materials and in labor. First, materials costs obviously are going up steadily. And the labor cost, well, we're asking them to do more labor, to take down a lot more asbestos, so. Though actually, I'm sorry, I think that's included in, the $30,000 was included, but we're asking now for two whole offices to be renovated as well. That's the board of health office and the historical commission. So that's where we're at, and that's why we're going to, that's why we're hoping to ask for more borrowing authorization at the special town meeting.
Good. Any questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yep, Mr. Boyle.
Or two questions, actually.
Good, Mr. Boyle. Yep.
Okay. One, are the bats gone?
I don't know, only because I can't see them. They should be gone as when the warmer weather hit last week. That's when the bats wake up, they're completely coherent, they're going to leave to go feed. And they have to leave the building to go feed. So once the insects come out, mosquitoes, that's when the bats leave to go feed for the, you know, rum this time, and then they can't get back in because the one-way doors, like I said, were installed on May 1st. I have a warranty from the company. If there's any issues, they will take care of it. But I personally watched them seal up everything on the building. I've walked through, I've checked everywhere on the building. Everything is sealed. They had 12 openings that they considered their main entrance and exits. And those, if you were to look up into the eaves of town hall, you would see these little gray tubes sticking out. And those are the one-way doors to where they would exit and they can't enter back in. So my belief is most, if not all, the bats are probably gone by this point just due to, especially this weekend being really warm, they were left to go feed.
I can fire you a question. Mr. Town Manager, have we reached any accommodation with the CRA over use of their property for off spacing? I am still waiting for final approval of the, of our proposed lease and would like to get that posted soon so that we can move in there as soon as possible.
What's the, that's a great question, Mr. Boyle. And a follow-up on that, Tom, is what's the, what's holding that up? Is it, because the lease should probably come from the CRA since they own the building, right?
Milltown owns the building. The CRA lease is from Milltown, so I'm actually working with Milltown.
Milltown, okay.
Yeah. And as far as, yeah, there were, there were some absences and unavoidable delays. The last I knew, which was last week, we were very close to moving forward with that. All we have to have is an agreement on a lease, and then we have to publish it in the central register because it is a unique acquisition, the same way we did with the bank. It's adjacent to the town hall and therefore the most advantageous spot for people to be because everyone will still be running back and forth between offices. And it'll save a lot of time. So we still have to publish. And that's, that will take time. And so I've been hoping for a month that we can move forward with it. And I have written regularly nicely, hoping that we get, you know, approval so that we can move forward.
I have another comment, but it's more for the board and just kind of in the discussion of this. As we think through to number 13 on the agenda and have proposal of a special town meeting, just for discussion, get your feedback on it. Because we, the town approved $500,000 already, and it's probably going to be $100,000, maybe a little bit more of this special financing, to have like a short, you know, PowerPoint presentation of, here's the original scope, some pictures of what's going on, and here's what we found, and here's what it's, basically lay out that story for the folks that are attending the special town meeting so they really understand. Because some residents may say, well, why can't $500,000 cover it? And we know why, we just laid it out here. But just really, what, what do we get at the end of the day, you know, the scope of work? But do you think that's a reasonable request? Do you think we need that for the conversation?
You're not going to hurt for this.
It could help.
It's going to hurt for the six people that are going to be.
Right. It's going to be very short. It's going to be, you know, it's not going to be wildly attended, but just something, other people can look at it online and things like that too. I think that's a good idea.
Is that something you could do?
I can get pictures of the offices and I can maybe get a rough estimate of what they're going to cost to redo them. I mean, the other thing that we're looking at that's a cost that we don't see that we put into the electrical bit is some of that wiring that is up there is still knob and tube. And for some people that know knob and tube and for the others that don't, for the others that don't, some that do, if you cut a wire on knob and tube in one corner, you can wipe out the entire floor because you don't, knob and tube is almost like a loop system. So you have no idea where that wire goes. So when those two offices get done over, if there is any knob and tube in there, which I feel is better than a 50/50 shot, when that gets cut or when you touch it, you have to bring it up to code once you touch it.
So really, really the ask, it's a great question because the ask is really not only the cost that you know about, but even contingency on top of that.
Right.
For all things you might run into.
There is definitely going to be new lights installed because if we're taking it down, it makes no sense to put the old lights back up, but to put new LED fixtures back into place, to get everything towards the green part. That is only just a small amount. It's only a few lights. But still, if there's knob and tube, all that's got to be cut and rewired. And if it knocks out the town planner's offices up there, there's hallways and restrooms up there, it could knock out those lights, which means we'd have to rewire that whole floor. And it's just something you don't know until you pull the walls down.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, we're just looking for a slideshow to say, this is what we asked for, this is what you approved. This is why we're asking for more.
That's it.
Just something nice and shiny. As the numbers come in, you can update it. Just something we can play that night for the litter there.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're planning because if you go up above it, there is knob and tube wiring above the offices. So the chances of it are pretty good. So we're putting that into the estimate because it needs to be done anyways because nothing is to code in there for some of the switches or, you know, I can't speculate on that, I'm not an electrician, but it all has to be fixed according to code.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what we're saying to you and Mr. Hutchinson is that we're going to go well one more time? We're not going to go a second time after that?
Correct.
Or third, or third time? So we want to make sure that we have a whole package really squared away?
Yeah.
Of what the ask is.
The engineers know that, so everything's going to be specked out correctly. And I can bring pictures and everything to show what's happened in those rooms and why they have to be repaired.
Okay. I can help you put the, like the little PowerPoint we can put online and things like that. People can look at it, some documentation. But yeah, great work, Pat. I mean, this is, this is project coordination that is fine, so.
And it's just not taking the plaster down and putting new sheet rock up.
Yeah.
The walls have to be insulated. Like you said, everything's got to be brought up to code. So that's why the additional cost is there.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Any other questions at all?
It's not much of a question. It's more of looking to the future. How much more money do we want to spend and invest on an aging and depreciated building? Which I love. It's historical and it's a great building, but we should start looking to the future. Are we going to continue to invest in town hall and renovate? Or do we want to discuss plant B down the line? I mean, I'm thinking, you know, long-term planning.
My opinion is the building is very structurally sound. Anybody can walk through it, see it's got a very good structure to it. The bricks aren't falling apart or anything like that, you know, it is an older building. So when it's really windy out, you can hear it shift, just like any other building that gets up there in elevation, you're going to hear some shifts. But it's all brick. It's older, so you probably hear it a little bit more. But I went around the building and double-checked everything for stress cracks and anything. I saw either it is very minor in a couple of spots that could be repaired to nothing major at all. So the building structurally, in my opinion, seems very sound. And with doing this work now and preparing for possibly making offices up there, which we do have prints that show offices up there with an elevator to make it accessible to everybody, there's only really one thing left, I think, after this, and that's to install an elevator to be ADA compliant. And to put offices up there would just make it easier for everything to stretch out. And I think the building could be there for many years, decades to come. This just kind of helps that process down the road. But I foresee that we could stay the town hall forever, as far as I can see it. I don't see it changing, at least in my lifetime, because of how, the structure that I've been through that whole building. I don't see really anything wrong with it. So with the exception of the plaster, which none of us had a choice in that.
Yeah. The accessibility is a challenge as well. I mean, I know there's lifts, but.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of good options for an elevator to be installed there. One of it will be on the prints once the job is completely approved and we start the renovations. There is a good location for an elevator to go that would, can pick people up from the back parking lot, bring them down to the police station, bring them up to the second or third floors. I believe it would work out well down the road once we move on to future plans.
Great. Any other questions?
We may want to consider a capital improvement study. Done at various places. Previous work, not doing the actual study itself or the plan, but commissioning it anyways. I don't know.
I think once this work is done, we really need to concentrate into looking into an elevator for the building because I have been told by the company who does all the maintenance for the lifts that getting parts for one of the lifts, the one that brings you down to the police station and up to town hall through the police entrance, getting parts of that is becoming more and more difficult to do because of the age of that lift.
So is that a capital improvement study on infra, buildings and infrastructure?
Yeah, basically outline the useful life of all the city building systems and a plan for either replacement or improvement. Make a way that cost against something else down the line.
Alyssa, can you note that for our future agenda? Because I think it's a great, if there's no objection for future agenda, we can put detail in that, but great idea. Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Boyle, you want to double-check? You're all set on your side on the Zoom?
May I pardon you?
Just making sure that you didn't have any questions or discussion points on this?
No, no, I didn't. I had my two questions.
Okay, great. Pat, thank you so much. Great update. Appreciate it. Number 10, a letter of support for the Mass Trails Grant and Greenagers.
Yes, I think Grant might be present.
Hey, Grant.
Hey, Luke. Hi, everyone. So the Open Space and Recreation Committee has been coordinating a project with this Egremont nonprofit, Greenagers. The nonprofit plans to fill the role of lead applicant and if awarded. The nonprofit plans to fill the role of lead applicant if awarded, would provide summer jobs to six Wacona Regional High School students. The project will create, if awarded, would create a handicap accessible loop five feet in width, and further meeting the universal design requirements set forth by the Forest Service Trail Accessibility Guide. And this would provide increased accessibility and assist in future routing and trail designation, potential trail group programs, mapping continued maintenance efforts. The maintenance is, it's important to note that that will need to be ongoing, and that the Open Space and Rec Committee has taken on the task of beginning to formulate strategies for continued maintenance. Just a couple weeks ago, on the 12th, the committee held the Third Annual Pines Invasive Removal and Cleanup Day, and the work with the Greenagers should provide quality education for the select few students who are interested in further sustainability measures being overall beneficial for the town. The Open Space and Rec Committee fully supports this, this project, and would love the select board's support on the Greenagers to take the lead on the application.
Excellent, thank you, Grant. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to write the letter of support, the letter of support for Mass Trails Grant Greenagers.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion? I have just one comment here. If the Open Space and Rec Program can consider also high school students who are not Wacona, but also Dalton residents, so those would be kids who are in both tech programs and things of that nature, just make sure they're not excluded.
Yeah, there's been a conversation about, I would leave it more towards the coordination and between the high school and the nonprofit, but there have been discussions of prioritizing Dalton residents at Wacona as well.
Yeah, just kind of ask them to add the Dalton students who attend VOTAC, are still Dalton kids.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Here or none? There's a motion, second, discussion's completed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Extentions, here or none? Great, awesome. Thank you, Grant. And then a town planner update. There you go. Yeah?
All right, so I think we've covered the Open Space and Recreation Committee, so a good place to start would be the planning board. They're back to a more regular meeting schedule following town meeting. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw presented by the planning board passed at town meeting with a motion made on the floor pertaining directly to the ownership of the units. The town clerk and I are submitting the required forms to the Attorney General, and forgive me, because this is my first cycle of this, I imagine once the Attorney General approves the forms is when the bylaw takes effect.
I believe that's the process, my first one as well, so deferred, Mr. Archinson, on process.
Yes, if I may, the Attorney General does approve planning bylaws. If they are approved, they are approved as of the date of their being passed by town meetings, so they're approved retroactively.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we've heard back from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission with our district local technical assistance requests. The planner, Chris Brown, will be assisting the planning board in updating the housing chapter of Dalton's current comprehensive or master plan. Anticipated action steps include forming a housing needs assessment and a housing action plan. The housing needs assessment is basically a data-driven document which guides the action plan with more specific goals and objectives, and that's usually the structure the Regional Planning Commission takes towards what we've requested. The accessory dwelling unit Subcommittee of the Planning Board, as presented in its charge when formed back in the winter of 2021, has been dissolved following the vote at town meeting. And at town election, Don Davis was recently appointed to the planning board following the clerk's resignation. All of the boards and committees which I work with are planned to be, if there's any restructuring, will take place after July 1st. The Board of Appeals has had a few applications come in recently, most recently one for an accessory structure exceeding 625 square feet on East Street. The Board continues to review applications as they're received. Green Dalton Committee has been strategizing energy efficiency upgrades to the town hall building, which Pat explained in tremendous detail earlier. The committee has been closely working with Pat and is strategizing grant applications which best fit the needs of the town's municipal buildings, preparing the required engineering items to become eligible for the Green Communities' grant programs to apply on an annual basis as it showers. So a really big thank you to the Green Committee and Pat for the continued work on that. Conservation Commission's Municipal Wetlands Bylaw passed at annual town meeting, and the Commission's Chair and the clerks are working on the similar required forms to be submitted to the Attorney General with the process, as Tom stated, being approved once approved by the Attorney General. And some other news, Dalton plans to utilize BRPC's fiscal year '22 scope of work to cover $3,000, split between two fiscal years, for the services of BRPC, its employees, which in this case do include two interns. And this is regarding the MS-4 requirement to update the town's stormwater mapping. I've conducted a field day, basically with the purpose of determining how much work could be done and how much time requiring, how many bodies to be out doing the mapping, actually popping the covers and collecting all of the data, and we determined that we do in fact need the interns, and I couldn't really do it myself, so it's been planned in fiscal year '23 to put together a similar scope of work where the contract, which is annually part of the stormwater budget between the municipality and the Regional Planning Commission, would cover the services of the BRPC staff and its interns. And I have a copy of that scope as well, pertains to other support that's required.
So does BRPC do the recruitment on the interns, or is that something?
Yes, they have to. This is a project that's also being done in Williamsburg and Cheshire, as two other MS-4 communities.
Okay.
So we're the third community.
Great, great.
And also additionally, the Housatonic Watershed Project is in its beginning stages for at least this year. To my understanding, this is a continued project stemming from a GE settlement back in 2000, and focuses on the east branch of the Housatonic, so that Dalton has been contacted. And basically, the Regional Planning Commission has worked most closely with a company ERG, who's been conducting some site visit information, and has asked myself and BRPC to prioritize some locations. And basically, the effort here is, this mapping project for FY '22 is an MS-4 requirement, and each year there are additional requirements. And one to be anticipated upcoming is a green infrastructure requirement. So what this, for the name, Housatonic Watershed Project is looking to do is begin work on preliminary designs for stormwater control measures, so the sites are prioritized based on the green infrastructure plan, stormwater management plan, and a few other local plans. And I believe the project seems to both prepare municipalities for upcoming MS-4 requirements in addition to determining the best management practices or stormwater control measures to better make the watershed more environmentally healthy.
Very good, thank you, Grant. Any questions for Grant?
Great report, thank you.
Yeah, excellent work. And I've had the chance to talk to you at Cumbees or in the, you know, as we see each other, but just wanted to, yeah, publicly just say thank you for all your work on the ADA bylaw and everything else, and all the members of the planning board for that work. You know, we had a great discussion and lively conversation about it at town meeting, but it passed, and so I just wanted to publicly thank you and the team for doing that great work behind that bylaw and everything else you guys are doing, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that much.
Thanks, Grant. If there's no objection, because I, I, I like to make sure that Grant can stay, if we get to ARPA funds, is there anybody else here for ARPA fund?
Yeah.
Discussion? Chief and Bud?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, why don't, if there's no objection, should we go to 14?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Mr. Archinson, this is the discussion of remaining ARPA funds and how do you use the balance? And I asked Mr. Archinson to have this on the agenda, because we're coming to a point now that we've made some decisions, very good decisions, and there's some other needs in the town, and we're coming down to the point of how are we going to apply these funds and what's the process that we should, you know, make those decisions? And so I want to, for the board to get just an understanding of where we are with decisions already made, what the balance is, some things that the town manager sees, and other discussions. I know, great, I missed the conversation, sorry about that, Chief, when we were talking about the fire truck, the ladder truck, and so things of that nature. So I just want to raise that for the board for awareness and talk about how we put a process on under it. So, Mr. Archinson?
Yes, I believe our highway superintendent is present.
Yep, Bud.
Is that true?
Yep.
Yeah, I think he has the majority of the presentation, if he can speak, that would be great.
Okay, sure. Lo is yours, come on, it's a hot seat.
Can I ask a question before we start?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Trump.
Do we have a number, do we have a number on what's lost on the ARPA, what we have?
I, I, I...
You have it? Okay.
Before we start this process, should I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Goodness, Boles.
When we started off, what is the balance?
It is 1.654, $451.65.
1.654? Okay, right down to the penny there.
Yeah, it is.
How much is that?
1.65 million, basically.
1.65 million, okay.
Don't forget the 65 cents.
Yeah, that's there.
Okay. I just like to point out, that's the balance of it. Expanded funds, we've obligated more than that, so that's just what we have actually spent. But Bud will go through the presentation, I think.
The question was the balance, so after...
Yes. I want you to get left.
1.65...
If you give me a nice place to start.
Yeah, Mr. Archinson, Bud's reporting, 1.65 is left remaining after expenditures already committed.
Right. However, we have not expended all of the money on all of the things we have decided to spend the money on.
Right, right, so that money's out of the, it's out of the balance, it's already committed, we're not looking at those dollars, so we get 1.65 in the kitty.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right now. So I guess...
Hello, Amazon?
Some of the things I have going, street scan, they came through, did all the roads, they scanned with a little fancy car, got all the data, April, April 25th, all the data was done. So all of my info for all the roads would be, it says 60 days, so it's like the end of June, I should get that, and that'll all be on the, be on the computer, so we can all look at it together, you guys won't get it alone, whatever you want to do, check it out.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
If you click on a road, it'll tell you, like, what that road needs, how much it costs, it's going to, it, I don't know what to say, it kind of gives all the roads a grade, like some of them are worse, it'll be like red, red over the backs as always.
It's going to give us the data prioritized.
Yeah, the green ones, the other ones, you know.
Yeah, that's going to be great.
It's going to help us do that, so that's coming, that won't be till the end of June.
And the cost of that program is already covered in the budget, right?
I did it, I did it in Chapter 90, so it's already, that's kind of already, you know, not affecting anything. And the sewer study we got going on, which has been going on for years, we'll finally get the final report by July 31st. They gave me a preliminary report, which is about 262,000 things, of things we got to fix in town, but there will be more, that was, just like I said, I need something. And with the contract, we had the time bound to do this project, it was by the predecessors of Tom and myself, was, they didn't put in for a final report, so they're doing all the work, but there wasn't going to be...
It sounds like a...
Until last week, we, Tom and I found this out in an email, so we have to kind of scramble...
So the company does a contract with no deliverable of a finance report?
Yeah, they can talk to you, but they're not going to give you a, hey, this is what you need, you know, so it's coming.
Okay.
It's on the way. And then, the other thing we're working on is orchid roads. S and K Designs working on the drainage for that road right now, because that road is probably, it's not the worst in town, it's pretty close to it. We got to get the drainage done before we can do the road over, because the drainage is obviously through the road.
So is that work already budgeted and paid and committed, or is that...
That engineering was, was paid for three, four years ago, and it kind of just went to the side, and we kind of revived it.
Yeah.
So they're working on it now to get us that out, so we can get, and Grant is working on, Grant and I have been working on trying to get, to apply for a grant to get that whole road done, so we were working on that as well.
Okay, so the cost is TBD?
TBD, yeah, TBD for that one. But that's kind of something, you know, if you can't get a grant, that's what we might want to have a little money set aside for, at least to get the drains done, and maybe next year's Chapter 90 money would be enough for me to get it paved and get that road done.
Would be that figure you're looking for.
I don't know. It's kind of, so it's, it's crazy how much, like, drainage, try to visit them all, and it's going to be big pipe to go through there, because that area needs a bigger sized, like a two-foot pipe all the way through, so it's going to be some, it'll be expensive. So we have that going on, and we did all of our, county did stuff they did through Franklin County this year as opposed to Berkshire County, because through Franklin County, they could do paving, all their paving and milling, they can do right through, they do it for us. We don't have to go, Tom doesn't have to get everything together and put it to the central register, county buys, do the whole thing, you know, type it all, do it all, repay them for to do all our stuff at yearly rate, and they do it for us.
Okay.
So I got all those back, actually, Friday, and the roads we put on is which we talked about, which they squeezed in last minute for them, which is fantastic, was Dalton Division. I had Dalton Division, yep, I just kind of went through, it was winter, kind of got the worst roads that I thought, because it didn't have a street scan in it. Dalton Division, Crane Ave, John Street, Washington Mountain from Dalton Division up to like Avon Drive, just past Avon Drive, it kind of changes right there as a transition. And then Sunset Judith Network, it's like one little loop over there, Judith's especially really back, and Chamberlain was the other one that I had on the list. So I put, those are the ones I put out the bid. I didn't, these are all ones that are in there right now, I haven't signed anything myself or Tom, I can still change this, or take something. I can't add anything, but I get a few, like, if it's, you guys say, no, we don't need to do, take Chamberlain.
Yeah, we can take off.
I can take it off at this point, I get to June 1st to change what we want to do. That's what I did, you know, I think at the beginning of March, I had turned it in. So that's where that sat, and that all came in for, for milling and paving, those roads, adjusting all the structures, came in 1.11662525 was the low bidders. That included Dalton Division, right? That included Dalton Division.
Just the, just the regrade and paving, but not the...
That's the milling, like, you know, shaving it off, getting the grade back to where it's supposed, piece of the marge is out there, that's most of the problems, the marge sits on the road, and that's just destroying it. So this will get us the marge going up, going where it's supposed to go. And it'll, you know, get us going in the right direction.
I know, I'm jumping ahead of you, but I'm sure you're right up. How much Chapter 91 do you have?
Chapter 91, I have $400,12673, which is after street scan, that's already taken out of it. And also, a couple weeks ago, we received $134,611.91 for RAP, which is Winter Recovery Assistance Plan from the state.
You're going to have $500,000?
So I got, I got $535,000 in kind of that money I can use, so I can use a half, I could use that, and then just like $600,000, I guess, out of the ARPA funds to do the paving. And then, you know, there's 250, 260 out of the sewer, a little bit more for that, I'll be something, you know, so there's still money to be had.
So you're looking, the total cost would be around $850 or something like that?
At this point...
He was in the Chapter 90 and everything else.
Yeah, if I use, if I use my Chapter 90, yeah, so I have that here, it's 534 I have in the RAP money, plus, it's supposed to be 1.166. So if I use, yeah, so right, it's like 850, but if you, it's going to be more for the sewer thing, so I don't know if it's easier just to say a million, maybe a, straight, you know, I mean, another 150 for, that would be like 400 to the sewer stuff, and then there's money to...
I was going to say, well, if it wasn't a million, then by chance, the sewer wasn't that much, maybe we could add some streets on, or could we do that with that?
I mean, we could do it the other way, too, I mean, we could put a few out, we could just do it, put it out the bid ourselves, you know, I could go get the amounts and stuff, and we can go through and do it, which we can do it, okay, yeah.
Point here, Bud, can you talk a little bit about the transfer station and equipment?
I think the transfer station is where it's at at the moment, I think we may have received money over the weekend towards... um, where it's at at the moment, I think we may have received money over the weekend towards the transfer station, so I don't think any ARPA funds would be needed for that.
Oh, we didn't receive that money, and, and that money won't be coming for a while, I think that'll be more for building the, building the, the, uh, transfer station that, uh, that Time Bond has, um, submitted those, um, plans for.
Oh, Weston and Sampson?
Oh, Weston and Sampson, sorry, yeah. Um, yeah, I, no, I was thinking more about replacing the equipment that's there, so that we're, we can, uh, we can have that be, uh, be town-owned.
Well, Tom, can you explain what you're talking about as far as that one, that two hundred and fifty thousand from the state? Can you tell me what your plans are, what the plans are for that? I'm not quite following.
Um. Yeah, that, that, it'll be quite a while before we see that money, if we ever see that money. That's my main point.
No, I just, I just, I understand that, you're talking about the, uh, they're doing engineering, tie and bond, what, what, I'm not following that.
Oh, oh, that, um, no, yeah, I, I, um, Bud was speaking about, uh, the state capital bond, uh, program. Um, but, uh, um, and, and it was Weston and Sampson, I'm sorry, they, uh, they, they provided plans for, uh, revamping the transfer station in a way that would make it easier to use and have more capability for handling waste transfer.
Well, this was, this is the engineering group of the Waste Management Committee selected to help with just kind of operationalize that, and what we need to do differently in that. So that was already covered in the budget, so now they come up with their report, and now it's, what's gonna be covered in the report, what we wanna change, is that?
Yeah, they gave us, I think, three options, and I think we chose, I don't, I think we did this meeting, it might have been the Waste Management meeting, kind of picked an option we thought would be the best for the transfer station, and then we kind of put the brakes on everything, um, 'cause it was getting late, and we rented Casella's stuff for this year.
Yep.
I think that's what Tom's saying, is he wants to buy our own stuff.
The transition of that ownership.
Yeah, we're gonna lease everything through this year, and I think what Tom's saying is he wants to buy everything with the ARPA funds, um, to have to own.
And that's separate, yes, that's separate from implementing the Weston and Sampson plan.
Yep.
It's mu, it's much more fundamental than that.
Yep, it's just basically getting away from the lease and buying it straight out, the equipment.
Yeah.
Right? Is that?
Yeah.
Which would save the taxpayers the cost of doing that, which is something we're all still very interested in doing.
And how much is the equipment purchased at?
About a hundred and forty thousand, uh, I was planning on saying a hundred and fifty, just because of the delay in actually placing the orders and getting them filled and things like that. So a hundred and fifty is a good benchmark for that. The actual cost for replacement today would be a hundred and forty, but, um, we're not ready to do that.
And then the two fifty, just to kind of, Mark, are you all set with your question?
Well, go ahead and talk, 'cause I'm still trying to catch myself up on some.
Okay. The, 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 um, state fund, and that was announced by, um, almost called the Senator, not yet, right? Um, Representative Paul Mark was two fifty for the transfer station. And that always gets tied up in the budget process and everything else, and it's, it's in there, it's in an amendment, but we know what happens at the end of the day. But that two fifty is to do what?
That would be to implement the Weston and Sampson plan and make any other improvements, say, to the concrete blocks that are there.
Yep.
Which are old and some of them decaying.
Great, thank you, Tom, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yep.
Is it maybe premature to purchase equipment prior to, uh, potentially implementing this redesigned plan for the transfer station?
No, I think it's necessary to do that. Um, we'll, we will need to do that over the course of the next year if we're going to do it. So, um, it would be good to get, um, the board to agree that that would be the use of ARPA money, the hundred and fifty thousand towards that. Then, then we could at least order them and get a price on them. They, they might take some time to get here.
What's the, what's the lease cost on the equipment from Casella now, on annual basis?
Uh, the two compactors, it's nine hundred a month.
Very low.
Nine hundred a month for the compactors right now?
Nine hundred each, nine hundred total?
Total for both, for.
Total, so.
Yeah, they, they take care of the maintenance on it as well.
So this becomes, back to Mr. Esco's question, it becomes, uh, where do you wanna put your money, right? So with, and I'm, so nine hundred, I'm not the math whiz, so nine hundred times twelve.
Well, here's, here's the, here's the issue. Um, if we're to use, if we're to continue leasing that equipment, we will continue to use Casella as our hauler. If we wanna have some choice in who the hauler is and how we, um, manage it, you know, from the town side, we might want someone else to do the recycling, for example. Uh, that might be more efficient, yeah, in the future. So if we wanna be able to manage it at that level, we'll have to own our own equipment, because if we don't have the same contract with Casella, they won't lease us their equipment.
Okay, yeah.
I think the only hesitation I have, too, is this is such a new thing for us to take it over, and basically, this is gonna be our first year. I'd hate to go out there, I mean, I guess if, if we turn it back to Casella, or whether we turn it back to, say, in a year or two it doesn't work, are we gonna still be able to use our compactors, or are they gonna say, no, we gotta lease another one, or?
Well, that, that's another great point, and, and on that, Ms. Sargent, on the ARPA funds, when do we need to spend it by? Is there, is there a burn date on that?
Uh, well, we need to have it committed, um, by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we, we can put that having, maybe in a holding bucket, see how we do first year, and then, see, this is why I wanted to have the conversation, for sure. Do you want to table this one for now, Mark, or?
I would, I don't mind icing that out, if, well, I don't even, I don't even think we wanna make that decision. Yeah, can we just hold off on the, uh, can we just hold off on the, uh, the hundred and forty for the transfer station right now? The other, I mean, the thing is, is Casella's taking over everything, you know, I was talking to somebody recently, and I, I think our, our, uh, options are limited about who's gonna come pick stuff up and everything like that, I think it's gonna be Casella, 'cause they're taking over everything, so.
I would, I would also frame it as, is there a greater need for that hundred and forty at this moment?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the full list yet.
While acknowledging the transfer invest, transfer station investment may be well worthwhile at some point, but is there a greater need today for something else?
Well, let's keep, let's keep on going, 'cause then we gotta hear from the chief, I'm sure Grant has some things, and, yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. Boyle. Go ahead, Mr. Boyle.
Uh, yes, please, is, uh, Dan just said, hey, Larry, Casella's taking over everything. You're gonna be taking over, they are taking over the Hub, Hub, the Hubbard Avenue Echo Plan. Their plan is to demolish it and put in a regional transfer station. So I think it'd be otherwise for us to spend a little money we have to in the first year until it does settle down there, because we may not even need a transfer station anymore. Uh, we may be simply assort, we could be assort into the, uh, Casella operation on Hubbard Avenue. So the first couple of years here, we oughta be real cautious about making major investments.
Okay.
And, uh, even if we, you wanna continue to have our own transfer station, we may lose so many customers to Casella down there, because they're in a competitive business, and they're, they're going to undercut us, it's like they're trying to undercut all their competitors in town, and, uh, we'd be forced to run out of deficit. There's a lot of moving parts here, it's best the first year, middle of the first year, or first two years, is to sit tight, we have a very inexpensive lease program, and not do anything outrageous, and buy our own equipment, and I don't know who it was, Dan or Mark, said, we could get stuck with it.
Fair, fair point. Tonight, I, if it's okay with the Boyle, like, to get, just get through the list, and then we can come back around for another meeting, prioritization, and, and broader, broader conversation. But I think that was an excellent conversation around the transfer station, for sure. Anything else on the list, sir?
I think that's all.
That's it?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could you say one more thing?
Go ahead, Mr. Boyle.
Yeah. Can I say, uh, yeah, getting back to the road thing, named by roads, maybe, uh, you know, I'm hearing a shot, but I didn't hear anything about Norwich Drive. Now, you gotta remember, these people came here before this board, two or three times, with petitions signed by eighty neighbors, neighbors of the neighborhood, yeah. And, uh, requested that we, uh, upgrade a street, it's a small street, uh, I don't know, maybe fifteen hundred feet, I don't think it would be a major expenditure. I think it would be, uh, remiss if this board didn't attempt to shoehorn into this overall expenditure that, uh, Mr. Hall had visions.
Yeah, I'll say, I agree with Mr. Boyle on that, and hopefully it could be one of those streets we talked about putting out for bid for on our own.
Yeah.
And get it done on our own.
Yeah, whatever, somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do my.
Okay, so, Mr. Hall, can we strongly suggest that you find a way to do Norwich Drive? There's another street right beyond it, again, it's a small street, now forget the name of it.
Meadow, Meadowview?
Yeah, Meadowview, that's it. There were only two streets when we did, we did read, when we redid Greenwich Park three or four years ago, that didn't get done.
Well, that's, yeah.
I don't think those streets have ever been paved, go back to the original tower-type surface, like Greenwich Park was developed in the fifties.
What's, what's, I, I hear what you're saying.
So, Mr. Hall, if, if you could take a hard look at that and see there's so many, you could, uh, squeeze them into your manipulations and fund them either with your ARPA money, or the check of ninety money, or the pothole money, maybe.
I hear what we're all saying about, I, I hear what we're all saying about Norwich, but I really wanna see the data. I've been asking for that for three years, and now we have with the street, the streetscan data.
Let's see that.
I really don't wanna make, I wouldn't wanna make any road decisions until I see that data. You have the, the bid up there for the roads, which is great, but that's really what I would like to see. And, and Norwich may be up on the top, but I just feel like, you know, the roads are the biggest complaints in the town.
Yep.
And everyone, everybody can make a complaint about that, and so I just wanna see the data, because.
Yeah, I don't think I've heard this held up in a long.
Yeah, so no major decision right now, and, you know, we'll see the data and then go from there.
I mean, that's fair enough, Mr. Chairman, but again, Mr. Hall, you mentioned the list of streets, and my point was, Norwich was not it. If we're going to follow, not mentioning any names, until the data is in, that's what we should do, start from there.
Yep, yep.
The streets that are on the list, though, did we wanna move forward on those sooner rather than later? Is that what you?
The only thing I can do is, that's true first, I have to either tell them no, and we can't, we'll do nothing, not, you know, just kind of the way it is. Um, that's, those ones are, I have to turn it, I have, we have to sign that for June first.
So you have pricing protections to June first?
After, after that, yeah, we'd have to go out to bid for everything.
Do it all over?
We, yeah, we'd have to do it all like they would do it for us, 'cause I've already done it.
Let's not lose out on that opportunity.
Let's see, and streetscan's report's gonna come out when?
Um, they, April twenty-fifth, that's sixty days, so, within sixty days, so, and the June, middle of June, I would bet.
If, if there's no objection from the board, I'd like to recommend that we just politely ask them to go faster.
Yeah, I, I can do that, I, I can, I can, I'll come to a call tomorrow, see if.
Yeah, see if they can kind of push that up, and then we need to have a special. June first is only a week away, though.
It's only, yeah. You said you can't, you can't add to this list, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, what we have to face is what we got here right now.
Correct. I can subtract, I can.
Subtract, but we can't add to this list right now. So you're, this is a streetscan, I think streetscan will help us out on the streets that we can go out to bid on our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, and for, from now on, like, for, for.
But these right here are the ones that right now we hit, hit these approval lines and say, yes, we're good with these ones going forward. And I mean, I, I don't think there's a street on here that, anyway, you can argue with, I mean, Dalton Division Road, John Street is absolutely.
Well, let's continue going down the list here of, uh, ARPA funds, because in the roads, which I, I agree with you, Mark, um, we got one point one million, so it's gonna be five hundred and thirty-four, uh, the chapter ninety, plus the balance coming out of ARPA, so that's roughly another five fifty or six hundred, um, so this is kind of.
And then you have two hundred and sixty-two for the sewer.
The sewer part of that.
So we're looking at about eight hundred and fifty, we were calling a million, right?
Yeah, because that's, that report, I'll get July thirty-first for the final, I'm assuming, it's not gonna get lower, probably a little bit more, I would guess.
Okay. So it's really the ask is a million for these roads, of ARPA funds?
Yeah, in the sewer, yeah, yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say that's the same, yeah.
Well, these roads are definitely a priority, there's no question about that.
And then, you got, the, uh, the other one from Paul Mark was five hundred thousand for the highway department?
Yeah.
What was that?
Roof.
Roof.
Our roof leaks.
Okay.
And then, uh, the, yeah, our roof just, it leaks through all, and there's no leak, we don't have heat in our offices.
Yep.
Or the break room, so we just have the heat in the big bays when you sleep the doors open.
Yeah, okay, great, that's good to have, yeah.
Move up in the world, boy.
Okay, awesome. Um, just like I, I thanked Grant, thank you for all your leadership, it's, you know, it's not easy, and, uh, you know, and thank you for getting that street, the streetscan accomplished. But you're doing great work, thank you, yeah. Any other comments or discussion?
No, thank you.
We are gonna make a decision on these roads tonight, though?
Um, I think it's important, because he has a first deadline, so.
Yeah, we need to.
Let's just get the rest of the, um, are we gonna pause that, just get the rest of the discussion, you wanna hang out for a little while? Okay, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah.
Chief?
Good evening. To continue part of the discussion we had a few weeks ago, um, you know, everyone says, do we need a lot of truck? And we've heard on that a few times in the last couple of weeks already. Yes, we do. We have a few that we've been looking at, um, they're both the same price, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's totally refurbished, um, certified, repainted, basically a hundred percent, you know, not new. But to get a new vehicle now, we're one point seven, one point nine million dollars, and, um, looking at about three years from the time that we bid it to the time when we receive it. The other issue with a new vehicle right now is they won't guarantee a price. So when you do, and I'm not even sure how this is legal, but when you sign the contract, there's no price attached. So that's only, that's only, uh, showing you a spot on the assembly line. And then, as it gets closer, they tell you a price. I can't in good faith ask for that, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. What I would like is a vehicle that's around right now, that can be repaired or refurbished to be useful for this town for ten years minimum. Painted, certified, mechanically sound, the whole thing, straight through, would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I, I know that we're likely to have already asked them for this, but, um, we're unable to finance it for ourselves due to taking over the ambulance, um, starting past July, and then also moving forward to the ALS paramedic license. So we're attempting to help out the town more and more, um, unfortunately, we didn't realize that a lot of truck was that bad.
Sure.
Um, when I started, uh, September twenty-seventh, um, looking at the fleet, it was our, our Horace vehicle. I had, so it had sustained a fire inside itself, which didn't help. Um, so the electrical system has been shot before I got here. It had been band-aided several times, and the band-aid has fallen off. So it was unable to be certified, the pump was unable to be certified, the ladder was unable to be certified, the hydraulic system was shot. So we are in a, a dire need. We've actually, uh, been very fortunate to get a loaner, uh, from a large city. But at any point, they can call back. It's, it's not a forever loan, and, you know, we'll forget about it.
Yeah.
So my concern is, what's the next thing that's gonna happen, you know?
Well, what's the turnaround time on that refurbished truck, like?
Four or five months.
Okay, so it's like, make a quick call here. Mr. Bishop?
I, uh, would like to recommend we do this, this is, I mean, we're one town, we're maybe, pay for two districts, but we're one town. There is a huge need, I mean, you heard the chief, a million something for a new one versus a hundred and twenty, it's a no-brainer for me. Uh, they need it, they're taking over the ambulance, that's costing a lot of money. Uh, these guys are putting their life on the line for us every day, like our police, I think we need to support them and give them the equipment they need.
Any comments, any of it?
Sure.
Yeah, I live on Central Ave, and, uh, on May thirteenth, there was a four-alarm fire at ninety-two Central Ave. A complete loss of the structure, and three of my neighbors were in danger of losing their homes as well. Uh, which could have also been another chain reaction if the response hadn't been what it was. And I heard that, uh, the ladder truck that we have now is a lease, uh, that's not able to be deployed rapidly. Uh, maybe I would ask more questions about that, but, um, I understand it takes fifteen minutes to mount the, uh, the hose onto the ladder, is that correct?
I wouldn't say fifteen minutes. It, that fire, um, was the problem, so, I'll back up.
Sure.
Our loaner ladder truck now is, it's not standing up there right now. But again, we don't know when it's going to get called home.
Got it.
Um, does not have what they call a pre-piped waterway. This is not a pipe going up to the tip with a, a water gun at the end. It is just a straight ladder. We have to clamp a gun on there, run a hose up there. So when ladder one showed up, there was, um, four of us.
And that fire?
Um, the witching hour, you know, it was a very tough time of day, people were at work, going to work, coming home from work, so we were very stretched. To put it in service, we can put it in service in seven to ten minutes. That day, we just didn't have the manpower to actually get it going. It was flowing water before Pittsfield's, we called Pittsfield's ladder truck to the scene, for the backside of the house. So we had the front and the right, they had the rear and the, uh, left. So we were basically both protecting several structures. I, I can't tell you exactly if it was fifteen minutes or twelve minutes, I was really kind of busy that morning.
So.
But knowing, knowing how it gets connected really answers the question.
Someone actually does have to get up there.
A manual clamp.
Clamp this on and run a hundred-foot section of hose down. It's not something we're used to. We have been training on it. We've trained four times. Um, it, the first week we had it, we were at a three alarm fire in Pittsfield, using it, uh, in front of the building. So it's been used several times since we've had it. The waterway is obviously like, when that comes out, it's the big guns, you know, bad things will happen. But just a straight aerial ladder, we used the, two days before that major fire, um, on Flensburg Ave at the house fire there, to get to the roof, uh, and the attic, and the eaves from that exterior fire. So, yes, it does take a few minutes. The, um, ladder we're looking at has a pre-piped waterway. It also has a bucket on the end, so it's, uh, safer to work off of. It's not just a regular aerial ladder. Um, with today's construction of homes, today with everyone having solar panels on their roofs, we can't step on them, we can't cut a hole in them. So really, a lot of our only ways to ventilate your house fires, or building fires are, to go to the gate lines. So we have a vent typically to keep your house more, uh, cool in the, in the summer. So we would actually have to make that thing, and you can do that safely out of a bucket, or we can rescue people out of it. So second-floor windows, third-floor windows. We have a place here in town that has five stories with a lot of people that would need to be helped out of windows. So there's a lot to this, and it wasn't just like, we need this and, and that's it.
Hundred and twenty sounds really low for such a piece of equipment. You can never hear this from a select woman, who, do you need more than a hundred and twenty, but it.
I'm trying to keep it very responsible.
Sure.
You know, um, could we buy something five years old for seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
We could.
I like that hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I do that, too.
You know, um, I'm trying, you know, the, I've called in a lot of hits.
We get the ten-year life on that hundred and twenty, which is.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yep.
You know, and then during that time, there's a lot of planning we're going to be doing.
Yeah, so you need capital planning around that replacement.
We've already had a capital plan set out for five years now. Again, issue is, we can't put numbers in with that.
Sure.
So, but now we have the large chunks of what we need. This is next, this is next, this is next, versus what do we need now? So there was a lot of revamping, I guess, that we've done, uh, since September. And unfortunately, this is something we can't handle.
I'm certainly in full support, yeah. Not just based on my own experience, uh, a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, we've got a lot of larger buildings in town that, you know, God forbid, you know, that ladder truck would certainly be a useful asset, more than useful asset, life-saving asset, you know?
I just got a couple of comments. The, uh, totally love the direction the fire department is taking within the community, being out there and being involved. Uh, I do have one question. As a third-generation police officer and a, uh, and a twenty-seven-year veteran, is the new fire truck, are the front seats actually seats, or are they reclined?
They're seats, and realistically, the only reason why there's some sort of rumbling between the red and the blue team is our beds have smaller wheels and your beds have bigger wheels.
Yeah, Mr. Boyle, any questions?
No, no, I'm all supportive. It sounds like a real bargain. It sounds too good to be true.
Yeah.
That price is, uh, gotta be way higher than that.
Well, with, with the four, four to five-month lead time, I, I'd be, uh, open to taking a motion on this one, just out of, out of the list.
I'll make a motion, we set aside a hundred and twenty thousand K for the fire truck.
So a second?
Sorry.
Motion a second, you for the discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hear none? Motion carries.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, just like, you know, with Grant and Bud, thank you for your, your great leadership, and seeing the guys out there at the park the other day, there's some great pictures there, and, and, um, more importantly, the great work that you guys did on this recent fire, and I'm glad that everybody is safe out of that, too.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Who's next? Grant, do you have anything on your list? For Opera funding?
Uh, I, I don't think I have.
Okay. Okay, Pat? Nope, okay.
Back to the roads.
Back to the roads, yeah. Uh, Mr. Hutchinson, anything else that we did not talk about tonight that's on your list?
Uh, no.
Any dolls we need to put aside potentially for the, uh, Hinsdale-Dalton police merger if that occurs? We can come to, we can come to that another day, too, but because we'll solve some balance issues. Okay?
I have a question.
Pat?
Were you coming back to thirteen, or were you feeling that a little bit?
Yeah, we're, we're going to come back to thirteen, yeah.
Just point of clarification, are we just going to, with the roads, we're just giving the public a go-ahead on that?
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion to let it go.
Yeah.
We can't let that go by.
I mean, I, I think, I understand where you're coming from, late for the, uh, street scan. But I think those are all streets that possibly we could put out to bid on our own and go from there.
Yeah, and it looks like just kind of rough numbers here, it looks like there'll be some, um, we got a million here, it'd still be about five hundred thousand left in the kit, so, um, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Do you have a motion, or just?
Yeah, if there's a motion regarding the roads, and, and again, the roads of Dalton Division, Crane Ave, John Street, Washington Mountain, from Dalton Division up to, um, Yvonne Drive?
Yeah, just past Yvonne.
Just past Yvonne Drive, Judith, and then Chamberlain.
Sunset Avenue.
Sunset Avenue, that's all, they're all one little loop.
Okay, all right.
Motion so, so, so made.
Sorry?
Motion a second, just, um, any discussion?
Well, did someone mention the, the amount? I know it was talked about, but in the motion itself?
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, good point. We just talked about the roads, but the motion, uh, for the one million, one hundred sixteen thousand, two twenty-five, let's double-check that.
I just asked you.
That's just one million.
Hold on, I, because we got to add the two hundred and sixty-two for the sewers, and we're going to round it out to one million to make it.
Yes.
One million, correct?
Yeah, I'll use the check.
That was for the roads and the sewer, correct?
Right. Uh, roads, sewers, and he's going to use the rap money and, uh, check and ninety.
Check and ninety-one for the rest of it.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. So really, we're just approving the Opera Fund, that's right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, if the motion could clearly state that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. So is that the right number, one million? Let's do the math so we do this right.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we set aside one million dollars for the sewers and the roadwork that we have talked about here. And that from the Opera Fund.
Sorry?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve one million dollar expenditure from the Opera Fund to cover the, the roads listed earlier, which is Dalton Division, Crane Ave, John Street, Washington Mountain, which is Dalton Division to Yvonne Drive, Judith Sunset, Crane, um, I'm sorry, Chamberlain. And as well as the sewer line on Orchard.
No, the sewer line, uh, just sewer.
In general?
In general, there's some repairs that.
Okay, all right.
That, so Grant and I work in Orchard.
Okay, so we get these roads plus the sewer activity for one million? Okay. Motion, and there was a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Boyle, were, were you a yes on that, I just didn't hear the vote?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Excellent, so tonight we get the roads and sewer plus the fire truck, okay.
We're tableing the transfer station for now.
Yep. That's it for Opera, and we'll go back to number thirteen, which is the request for special town meeting. Mr. Hutchinson?
Uh, yes, um, I don't know if you got the motions and explanations sheet in your packet.
We do, yep.
You're okay, good. So the, uh, oh, yeah, sorry. I, I do have that here. Yeah, so the first article has come down quite a bit, uh, before the, uh, the higher, uh, from the higher figure that I had, uh, that had run alarm bells in our finance department. And, uh, we now are only looking for one figure for one account. Uh, eight thousand six hundred forty-three sewer and drain debt expenses. And this would be a motion to amend Article Three or the operating budget. So this would raise the operating budget by, um, eight, eight point six thousand dollars. Uh, and, and they were, uh, they were not anticipated at town meeting, we re-looked at the figures, and, and that's what we're, that's what we're going to need. Skipping to Article Three. FY twenty-one had some deficits in its grants account. Things that, um, we, that, uh, were not, um, I'm not sure, I, I, I think each of them had, had a slightly different reason for being, but, uh, there are slight deficits in three different accounts. Two thousand sixty-six in miscellaneous, one thousand four hundred thirty-six for the E nine-one-one grant, and six hundred thirty dollars, um, having to do with, uh, the CARES Act. But I'm not sure, uh, exactly which part of that, so I need to, I need to get the language from our accountant for that. So the, the, these would be, for instance, um, ex, um, expenses for which reimbursements were not filed until after the deadline. That's, that's an example of one of the reasons that, uh, we would have a deficit for that account. And, and again, I think the particular circumstances were different for each, but that's, that's the, uh, that's the reason, the overall reason for, for those, uh, those deficits. And then, uh, for Article Two, that's the, uh, additional money for, um, additional authorization to borrow in case we need the money for, in case we need that much more money. Again, we won't know, uh, what the grants are. We were hoping to have the bids come in in mid-June. And then we discovered the, uh, structural problem with the second-floor walls, and will now not have those bids in, in time for the special town meeting. So, uh, too bad about that, but, uh, you, you did hear the estimates. Uh, thirty thousand in unanticipated expenses for the bats, um, the asbestos going up. It started at the base of thirty thousand dollars, which was, um, uh, a lot more than was originally anticipated. Again, that's the entire ceiling and all of the walls of the Opera House on the third floor. Now we have to add to that the two offices that need to be stripped and redone, including their, uh, including rebuilding the walls and, and, uh, putting in the right electrical equipment. Uh, so the bats being thirty thousand, asbestos being thirty thousand base, plus the new work that has to be done. We're not sure exactly how much that's going to be, um, but starting with sixty thousand dollars and going up, the two offices could easily be twenty thousand dollars. And we would like, you know, a little contingency above that as well. And again, this is just authorization. If the bids happen to come in low, we don't have to borrow. Uh, but we're thinking that this would give us a safe amount, uh, to get the job done. It's, it's a little dicey, because nobody knows really what the, uh, what the prices are going to come in at, due to a lot of projects being done. So the demand on the contractors is high, so prices are, in general, higher than they have been. We won't know how much until we get the bids in, but that's why, uh, we're asking for the hundred thousand.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, Tom, uh, can any of the Opera money be used for this? I mean, why borrow money if we've got like five hundred thousand still unspoken for?
Uh, it would actually be kind of problematic. Uh, Opera money has to be, um, and uh, I'm actually going to have to check with the, uh, furco procurement people uh, to see whether the, that particular procurement met federal procurement rules. They're, they're different, um, they're not all that different. And in general, the Massachusetts procurement rules are stricter than the federal procurement rules, but there are some cases in which they're not. Rather than, well.
Did you freeze, or?
Didn't mean to upset you.
Yeah, no, we kind of paused it for a moment, it's like you're just thinking, but now it's frozen. Oh, we can't hear you.
Uh, I, I did, it's all.
Yeah, Tom, we lost you there.
Sorry.
Yeah, we lost you there for like a good minute and a half, you froze on us. So, you were talking about the procurement laws between Mass and Feds, and, and that's where we lost you.
Yeah, there are some differences. I, I would have to check to see whether that, uh, whether the current process would be, um, would be compatible with that. And this is only a going to Africa check, was a little skeptical that we could get it done, uh, with the amount of money we have already authorized, given what we've already spent. So this is enough of a cushion and authorization, we think, to have the project be able to move forward, whether or not we need it. It's, it, I would say it was that for sure now, and I can check, and we can find out by town meeting, um.
Well, it doesn't matter, I think, you can always use the roads.
Be a great, great way to spend it.
I thi, I think that disruption is on our side, not his, because we're all so frozen.
Yeah, I see you frozen.
Yeah.
But I can hear you. Let, let me turn my video off, that, that can help sometimes. I still see you frozen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Tom, yeah.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's, um,
It's okay.
It, it's not guaranteed to be spent. It's an authorization to borrow in case the bids come in, um, as high as we think they might. I'll put it that way.
Well, I guess that Mr. Bishop, Bob, to your question, and I'm, I'm trying to follow that with those, with those brief. with those, with those brief interruptions there, for the disconnection. So, Tom, we can put this on the warrant, but you could also, you're gonna also evaluate it, see if we could use Opera dollars, or do you know that for certain at the moment that we can't? I didn't follow that.
No, I don't know, and, and I can find out certainly soon, I would think.
So, if we can do that, and keep it on the warrant, and if we need to move forward, we just move forward with the warrant article, if not, we use the Opera Fund's one hundred, hundred K.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, Tom, the date of the special town meeting, do we have a date set yet?
Yeah, that would be the last, the last Monday in June, or?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. June twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I question Tom, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Boyle.
We have a select board meeting scheduled for that evening. Is that going to be canceled, the new, the special town meeting?
I think we could kind of do the same thing we did before, right? Start this select board meeting early?
Yeah.
Okay. How's that, Mr. Boyle, just have a select board meeting like an hour earlier, at six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll be out of town now.
Anybody else out of town that, that week, that day?
I don't think so.
I would like to be out of town.
Exactly.
Just a little vacation, something. Okay. Alright, so move forward with that. Tom, do you need a vote, you need a vote on the special town meeting, right?
Uh, no, that'll be next, next time, this is just an introduction, just to have any discussion that might be needed on any of these items, and.
Okay, great, thank you. So, move number fifteen, the update on the Hinsdale-Dalton Police Department merger? Is that Ivisakson, or was it, I don't know, Chief Strout was gonna be here, do we want to table this, or are we good to go? Mr. Boyle is frozen as well. No, no, Mr. Boyle's not frozen, okay, he was thinking. John, can you hear us okay in your range? We did see at the beginning here that we're making everything possible, right, so technical issues. Okay, so, why don't we go ahead and, oh, I know, what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the reorganization plan, the invitation for bids. And, don't know if we need to take an approval, this wasn't that far, oh, there is an agreement Okay, so this is the invitation for bids, so when a contract comes back, we can formally approve the contract.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, let's table it.
Table it for now?
Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth, we'll table this.
Motion to table.
Okay, motion to table for the next select board meeting, is there a second to table?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report on town debt, we need Tom for that one as well. We'll table, motion to table a report on town debt?
Yeah, we got it right in front of us.
Okay.
So basically, we pulled over half a million bucks?
Yep.
I'm just excited the select board left the meeting.
Uh-oh, I see.
Okay. We got unused debt.
Yeah, the unissued debt, one point seven eight million.
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand for Dalton Division, five hundred thousand for the Town Hall reservation, two hundred for Town Hall rewiring, and smaller ounces?
Yeah, we'll have to turn back to next slide. Sorry, we're sorry, anything to?
Yeah, listen quick. Okay. Alright, so there's a motion to table the discussion of the debt?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, what's that? I think it's, I think it's wireless issue here. Alyssa?
Yes.
You can connect it to my hotspot if you want to, I got a full.
Recording in progress.
Everybody under the gun for Joe and May, and always opportunities for the stats, they picked each other.
Okay, everybody's back, it looks like.
Live, too.
Alright.
You moving around?
Are we moving around that?
So the, yeah, so, so Joe, I think the question is having a June sixth select board We, since it's two weeks from now, it could almost be a regular meeting and not meet on the thirteenth, if you wanted.
Okay. One less meeting?
Five with that.
Okay. That sounds like a plan, Tom.
Sounds like a plan, Tom.
Hey, Tom, while we were disconnected there, we did table two things, but we can come back to them, is the update on the Hinsdale-Dalton Police Department merger?
Yeah. Happy to go over that, you got the invitation for bids in your packet, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's what went out on May twelfth, the responses are due back on June ninth, and the work is required to be done by December twenty-ninth, I think, the, the last working day and over the last Thursday in December, so that we can get it into everybody's budgets. The, the money bid is the, well, not the money bid, the, the non-money bid, but the work bid is number two, the scope of services. So this is something that I worked out with Chief Strout and the town administrator and police chief in Hinsdale. So it shows a, a number of different phases to the research, to the project, research, analysis, meetings and interviews, and report and recommendations. So it's, I sent it out to eight parties, I got a, one of them declined, one of them expressed some interest, we won't really know what we get until we get it. There were, I think, five, five of the eight were more or less the usual suspects in doing municipal consulting work, and three of them were public safety consultants who mostly do staffing for police and fire. But in this case, I thought that they, they might want to consider this kind of regionalization plan, it would give us consultants who were, I think, very familiar with the workings of public safety departments, which, in, in looking around on, on the web a little bit, I saw that not everybody who does the typical kind of consulting is as familiar with public safety departments as they have to be to do a good job on this. So I, I sent it off to three of those consultants as well, just seeing if they would, if they might be interested in taking this on. Again, it's not, not their usual work, but I thought I'd, I'd give that pool of candidates a try. That, that's really all I have for an update, because it's not gonna be till June ninth, till we get the bids in.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a just a quick statement, because there are rumors out there, that this is in such an infancy stage, this is the, this is the, the, this is the beginning plan, to just see the feasibility, to see if it's even possible to do something like this. There hasn't been no decisions made in the town of Dalton, town of Hinsdale, it's been nothing, nothing out there concrete, this is to just see if it's even feasible to do something like this. I just want to put that out there, to get rid of some of those rumors that are out there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a great comment, it is a, we're funded for a feasibility study, and then we can determine next steps. Spot on, Mr. Strout. So, Tom, the final plan submitted to the town manager no later than December twenty-nine, And with transition costs and proposed FY twenty-four budgets for both towns, we're in FY, I messed up my fiscal years on the hospital side with the town, we're in FY twenty-three coming in?
Coming up.
Coming up. So that only leaves, that only leaves us four months, for really five months, before we hit FY twenty-four, is that enough to actually implement the plan if we decide that plan is the right way? Because I'm sure we'll need to have, once we get the transition costs and the proposed FY twenty-four budgets, I'm sure we're gonna need some sort of town approval at town meeting to agree to regionalization. It just seems like that timeline is quite, is very tight, I don't know, I don't know what steps we need to take.
Well, it's a timeline for the first year. Implementation may take two years. There, there may be interim steps, we don't know what the plan is going to look like.
Okay.
But we do know that if, if costs are identified for FY twenty-four, they will come in in time for us to include them in our budget.
Okay.
So that's not for implementation of the whole plan, that's just for implementation of the feasibility study.
Right, which could take a couple of years to make the transition.
Right.
Yeah, we, we don't know what the plan is gonna be yet.
Right, in my understanding, there's additional grant money out there also for the second part of this, correct, Tom?
There could be, no grant is guaranteed, some towns got hundreds of thousands of dollars for implementation, I have a hunch that a lot of that is for communications equipment, because towns often are not on the same wavelength, literally. Luckily, we, we do share dispatch with, with Hinsdale now, but there, there may well be additional costs for implementation, and there is potential grant funding out there for that.
Okay, I'm gonna, it's just in recognition of time, just want to call it out, do we want to continue with the other items on the agenda, do we want to defer them? And again, to the executive session, we just want to complete the agenda to get to executive session.
There's only a few left.
Okay.
I guess I'll just finish it out.
Okay. Next one is the, any questions on the Dalton-Hinsdale feasibility study? Okay, move in the report on town debt.
Yeah, the treasurer put together a beautiful document here, listing all of the outstanding debt items as of last week. If you can kind of skip to the very, very bottom, on the left, there's a figure that's much larger than the remaining balance, the authorized and unissued debt as of last week is one point seven eight eight million dollars. And that includes the approved eight hundred thousand for Dalton Division Road, the five hundred thousand for Town Hall renovation, which has not been borrowed yet, the two hundred thousand for the Town Hall IT rewiring, whose scope was expanded to include all the, all the town buildings, and some other smaller balances. The one I, the three I just mentioned add up to fifteen thousand dollars. So there's another two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in smaller balances that were, that have been authorized but are unissued, so they're not part of our debt currently, but they could become part of our debt moving forward. And some of them will, obviously, the Town Hall renovation, Dalton Division Road, more IT work as well. So that's, that's a, a quick report, I know Mr. Bishop had requested a report on outstanding debt, and I hope this is.
Very good, Tom, thank you.
Informative, satisfactory for your purposes.
Very much so.
Yep. Number seventeen, discussion on bargain property?
This is perhaps the beginning of, of the, of the discussion, and I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it here, just to note that the town meeting did vote down the forest stewardship plan, which was explicitly linked to maintaining town ownership of the property. So, the, the town meeting has, has sent a signal that they were not very interested in maintaining ownership of that property. Their, the Department of Agricultural Resources believes that there may be a workaround with the, the laws regarding the disposition of real property in towns, and I will, I'm either looking now or in the near future for direction from the select board on, on proceeding with disposing of the property, if that is the will of the select board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Boyle.
If permissible, at this point in time, I'd like to reiterate a motion that was made two and a half years ago, to sell the Barton, what's known as the Barton property, at open public auction, and enjoy a small, minor legal issue, it was pulled off the auction block at the last second. I believe that the agricultural department is working, along with private parties, to resolve this small legal issue and make, and reunite, which is the holy grail of the agricultural department, to reunite this APR lien. And they're hopeful that a person, as a person's sales agreement on a parcel or wizard, will then come to an open and fair public auction in Dalton and possibly purchase it. There's no guarantees, but it's the only real viable option, as I understand it. And I've heard a lot about this process, while I've been sitting around and not doing too much, and that, I'll, I'll go ahead and back, before I make the motion, go back to Mr. Strout's question on three fourteen, and that question that was supposed to be forwarded to the town clerk, I mean, the town consulate, but never was. Does Dalton have the legal authority to sell this property and convey it regardless of the APR lien? And the answer to that question is yes. So, but it's hopeful, it's better to work with the agricultural department and avoid them possibly trying to pique the sale. But as far as the rights go, we are perfectly within our rights to sell the property. So at this time, I think I made, Mr. Bishop was chairman, and he suggested I make a motion, the same motion, that we put the Barton APR property up for public and fair and open auction, all three parcels, all, as soon as humanly possible. I realize that there's a, you have to consult with the town treasurer, she's the custody of the town lien property, she may have more parcels, that we might have put up the same auction, and that would be probably the more money we could generate for. Uh, and that would be probably the more money we could generate for this town and on many projects that we hope to complete in two, three years, I think these funds would go a long way toward it. So my motion is, I move that we put the APR property owned by the former end department up for full and fair auction at a price to be ter, at a minimum price to be determined by this board as soon as possible. Thank you.
Oh, there's a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, motion, second, discussion. Mr. Bishop.
I am for selling this also, but right now, the town of Dalton is owner of part one, and it, there actually is two owners for that right now. And I would love to see this go out to a fair. I don't want any of these backdoor deals where this guy's gonna buy this. I think it should be set up so everybody has a fair chance to bid. Minus that piece on Windsor.
Absolutely, Bob. Fair and open auction.
And I also want to make sure the North Mountain Park piece is not included in this sale.
Yeah, it's only the three, the three parcels that are APR designated, consisting of 128 acres. Now, this is interesting. Currently valued by the assessors at 28,000. You divide that by 148, it comes out to 208. Now, when we, and I, as far as I'm concerned, the motion still stands. We voted two and a half years ago, or two years and two months ago, to sell this property. And the issue, that order has never been rescinded. But, thank you.
I think between
The board would agree on your date, and we can, uh, move on with this project.
Yeah. For discussion, I'm not in favor of the motion or to sell it until we get a, uh, assessment or recommendation from our open space committee. We have a very, you know, important open space strategy for our, for our town. And that question has not been answered. I know how the town voted not to fund the forestry, but what else can we do with that land update that we currently have? What value can, can we get from that kind of open space opportunity? So I would not be in favor of selling it this time without that assessment from the open space committee.
Through the chair, hey, Tom.
Yes.
I feel like I was included in an email with somebody, uh, who was discussing this over the last week. I can't find it in my email. Was it an attorney or? Did you, were you corresponding with somebody involving this property?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think Grant's been corresponding with an attorney regarding this property. I corresponded with town council.
There's an email that was, did you get that?
What date?
The email I printed at the center folder stated May 16th.
Yeah, you know, I don't, May 16th? Yeah, there was another email a while back from, from the attorney from MDR that, that basically highlighted what we could do, and I actually read that out at town meeting when we were discussing this.
I think my point, you know, I don't, um, disagree with what John is saying to the point, but I still think we're still too early. Because it seems like there's discussion, this legal council, uh, the Department of Agricultural Resources said that we could discuss this further if the town thinks that this would be helpful. So I don't know if we've had those discussions. I don't know if Zessens had these discussions.
No, I haven't had any discussions since that May 16th email.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like there was, just looking through the note, looking through the emails here, and the one April 27th, the MDR attorney mentioned that she's been receiving a bunch of calls and emails about the matter, but, but nobody represented the town. So there, there's just a lot going on here, and I, I, I really like to advocate that we don't take action on that until we get some sort of assessment from open space committee. If they determine they don't want to do anything with that prop, that land that we own in the town, then come back here and we sell it. We just don't miss that opportunity. But up for a vote.
I, uh, I know we got a motion on the floor in a second, but however, just, I'm not even concerned because the voters spoke about the, in regards to the, with their, well, not really. It was kind of a, I wasn't happy with the way the vote went down as far as trying to feel what the town, the residents were thinking and stuff. I think we should have been more straightforward with it. That being said, I still think there's some, I, I want a solid answer from the APR people and the town attorney, on what the best avenue was with this. So I mean, I'm, I'm gonna vote no for right now until we get those answers. Like John said, he said that my answer wasn't, my question wasn't answered, but he has an answer, John has an answer. I don't know where he got his answer from. But I just want it from, I want it on paper. I want it from the town, the town attorney or from, from the APR people.
I, I would agree with that, Mark, and then we can figure out what's best for the town.
Mark, can I, Mark, can I answer to your question? There's an email, and I saw this too, that was from, uh, Ms. Tina something else in the Department of Agriculture to Tom Hutchinson saying, yes, this land can be conveyed as part of the, uh, uh, agricultural department's overall policy.
She actually says that, do you think there is a way to do it for procurement for sale that would be in keeping with the department's policy and the APR prohibition against subdivision? Again, I'm happy to set up a time to discuss further if the town thinks that would be helpful. So I don't think it's as simple as, she said, yes, go ahead and sell it. I think if she's saying there is a way to do it, just reach out to me and we'll try and figure it out.
Yeah, and that's what triggered my putting this item on, on tonight's agenda. Uh, I, I would point out that the parcel is dedicated to agricultural use. So, um, uh, as Joe, as, as much as I, I'd like it to be available for general recreational use, um, the, the land is, is required with the current APR program to be managed agriculturally. So, um, that's, that's one of the problems with the town maintaining ownership of it and not leasing the part that can be used for agriculture and, and having a good plan, a forest plan for the rest of it. So that's, um, that, that's the, the, the knotty part that I see in maintaining the town's continued ownership. Unless, as I said in a, in a rather flinty email, the town wants to sponsor the, the world's largest community garden.
That.
Um, but that would be, uh, that would be an agricultural use, but I'm not sure that, uh, it's entirely feasible either.
We, we could lease part of it and use the rest for, or, we could lease it though, correct?
That, that, that was the, you know, that was my original idea.
We could sell.
And, uh, and MDR went along with it, and so I brought it to town meeting, and, and that was, in, in order to do that, we would have to have a plan. They made that clear, MDR. We would have to have a plan for the non-agricultural part in order to fulfill the requirements of the APR program. And that, and, and a forestry plan would, would do that. They, they made that clear. Uh, which is why I was, uh, suggesting that as a, as an option.
And they also point out that as long as this current situation continues, we are in violation, and where we own the parcel of Windsor is in violation. And as I said, the whole holy grail of the MDR is to get these two under one ownership, reunite the lien, APR lien.
Yeah.
That's what the, uh, Department of Agriculture paid for 25, 30 years ago, and that's what they would like to see happen.
Our, our goal is not to sell.
And it
Yeah, our goal is not to sell as one, one land. We, we can't do that. It has to be separate, and that's what we need from MDRs, that we can sell it separately.
And Joe, I'm trying to, oh, I, well, you know, I'm not trying to throw a cold one right here, but everybody is a right, outdoor right relation. But I talked to another, uh, APR holder in the northeast section of the town, another farmer, and he said, his, his land has an APR restriction. Like he, you know, he didn't talk enough about it. He brought up a riding right. He, he takes horses or ponies and rides around in a circle of training. The, uh, Department of Agriculture came along and said, uh-uh, that's not agricultural use. It's a recreational use, and that's not allowed. And he had to take it back. Now, I can give you your name, and you can go check it out. So thought that being recreational area or exit or land is just not feasible.
Not to beat
The way this APR law works.
Not to beat this longer, but there's also a restaurant out east that's on APR land, but they're able, the reason why they're able to continue with the restaurants is because they use farm to table. So there are other options out there. I just think we, we have to get some opinions on this. And, and I know it seems like this, and it has been dragging out, seems like forever. I just think we need to, uh, just get our ducks in a row. There's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion and a second to, uh, the voted, the motion is to, uh, sell this parcel, um, as soon as possible. A motion was made by Mr. Boyle, seconded by Mr. Bishop for discussion. Oh, Mark for discussion. And then, um, so all in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Aye.
I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed, unopposed?
Opposed.
I'm abstaining because I'm not really sure what I want to do with this.
Motion does not carry. Mr. Stroud, do you want to make a motion to direct, Mr. Hutchinson, to get more detail on this?
I don't know. Tom, I don't even know if I need a motion. Tom, can you give us a legal opinion on this? And let's get on this so we can get this off our table and deal with it. It's been three, four years that we've been dealing with it.
Did we lose him? Tom, can you hear us?
Just lost him on the laptop.
Tom, can you hear us?
Nope, look, he just texted, he lost it. So I think we, did we run out of power?
Yep.
I asked, I tried. I tried. No, I'm sorry. I tried.
I definitely would have.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead while we wait for Tom to come back. I think this, this next one we can do without, number 18, the vacation rollover.
Yes.
Uh, 26 hours for the town manager. They got a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And Mr. Boyle can elect that's majority.
John, can you hear me? Looks like they're talking, but they can't hear me. John, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Tom?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
All right, it's a little technical difficulty.
Okay.
All right, so the motion to not carry on the discussion for the Barton property, and, um, Mr. Stroud was asking Mr. Hutchinson if he could follow up with, um, with the legal team and, and the MDA, MDR, on what, um, what ways we can go forward with procurement or what, what, what other options do we have? And then if you could do that research and then bring that back when ready, and we'll go.
Yeah, Tom, if you can get that off our table. It's been, we've been dealing with this for three to four years, so if you can just get us, get us some hard answers so we can get moving on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, number 18, the vacation rollover, um, 26 hours for the town manager. We just had a motion and a second, um, and we went for a vote. Everyone here was for that. Uh, Mr. Boyle, just to get your vote on that, that's rolling over the vacation hours for Mr. Hutchinson.
Yeah, I voted yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the second one was for 40 hour, 40 hours for Chief Stroud. Vacation rollover, there's a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 40-hour rollover for the police chief.
All second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hold on, hold on, with the 80, 80 hours? Oh, right, the shit here is
It's 80, which is it?
Let's ask.
Honestly, I don't even know.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson? We get the memo from, um, Chief Stroud.
Okay, let me go. The 10 days.
Go with the memo.
I say to vote, we'll just 80 hours.
Okay.
Okay, I would amend that a motion to carry the 80 hours, 10 days, FY23.
Okay.
Uh, second.
Okay, motion second on the amended motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions?
Abstain.
And motion carries. Town manager update, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Okay. The past couple of weeks started out with dealing with the new sharply rising COVID numbers and getting the new CDC advice out on our website and social media. There was a point last week when Berkshire County, I have here, was tied for the sixth worst case rate per 100,000 in the country. Later we rose to, uh, I think the second worst county in the country. Uh, we've come down a little bit since then. Uh, I drafted, oh, you saw the invitation for bids for police regionalization? Uh, Dan Filio has submitted a letter of resignation for emergency management director effective this coming June 30th. I am looking for a new EMD and have already spoken with one qualified, well-qualified candidate. Uh, I hope to be able to bring someone to you soon to appoint to that position.
Good.
Well, we have received notice that our regular town council fees will be going up to $215 per hour from, I believe, 175, where I think they've been for some time. So this is not unexpected, though it does come after our FY23 budget has been passed. I will, as always, be careful in presenting with work and continue to do as much research as I can before I ask for their opinion. Other specialty work fees are also rising, though we do very little of that. The Spring Conference of Massachusetts Municipal Management Association uh, is June 2nd and June 3rd, and I have been planning to attend both days, that's a Thursday and Friday. I may be attending another event for a portion of June 2nd, though, which I expect will be good news for Dalton. And I'll update you on the details regarding that as soon as I can. Uh, I've been working with the assessors on some items to wrap up as soon as possible and hoping we can get them done soon. We'll have a new assessing services contractor on board July 1st, uh, who will be tackling a number of outstanding items. I have drafted a contract for IT services as we spend enough to require attention to procurement requirements and having a contract for that. Luckily, our current provider is on a state contract, which means we don't have to go out to bid, and the current provider is more than satisfactory. But we should still have a contract for the amount of money we're spending. I believe everything's going to work out fine, but I thought you'd know, you'd like to know we needed a bit of reorganization in that department, which I am doing. I got an invitation to submit a wish list of impactful requests for a state bond bill and contacted the highway superintendent and the police chief, both of whom came up with some items. I also added additional work on the town hall, including an elevator. There's no telling at this point if any of this will go anywhere, but we were able to respond nimbly four hours before the same day deadline. And finally, the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council, with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission's support, has just published its latest edition of Berkshire Benchmarks, which gives a wide range of data about life in the county, such as the average family tax bill and the percentage of town funds in stabilization, employment by sector, and agricultural land versus number of farms. Uh, it's a great report. If anyone's interested, you can, uh, just Google Berkshire Benchmarks or let me know, and I can send you a link for that. So that's my report for this evening.
Great, thank you, Tom. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Boyle?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Uh, Tom, tomorrow, I, at 4:00 PM, I have a MTL meeting and a Zoom meeting, and I'm certain the subject is really come up. And I'd like to have some kind of an answer, because it's awful embarrassing to go to these meetings about Dalton's lack of instituting an engineering firm to forward the Dalton Division project. Now, what, is there any status or update on the engineering situation? on the engineering situation? I just have to edit a final version of the RFP and go through the publication process. It may not happen by June 1st, but it's going to happen pretty quickly. So, I can, in good chances, in all honesty, tell them that it's going to work in the near future? Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Future agenda items?
I have a couple. I don't know if they're really for future agendas, but just to bring up to, for not even discussion, but just to point out a couple things. I think we need to get back to doing the exit interviews. I think they give a lot of information on employees that are leaving. My understanding is we have an employee that's leaving. We gave her notice upstairs, and she'll be leaving, and I think we should do an extra interview with all employees that are leaving the town. But I would also like Mr. Dever to sit in on these or some member of the select board, if he's only able to do that. Tom, do you have any input on that?
I think it's entirely appropriate to go back to Zoom meetings for the moment.
That's not what I said.
Yeah, I think you missed it, Tom. Mr. Stroud was talking about when employees resigned from the town to do exit interviews with the employees, and also have one of the board members sit in on those interviews. He recommended myself, and I have no objection to doing that. I'd be happy to do that. I think it's an important, important cycle process. Where are you going to do exit interviews?
Oh, okay. I have, I, I, I've done one exit interview. I don't always have the opportunity, but I'm, I'm happy to, to try to do that when I can. And, you know, I'm not the, the direct supervisor of a lot of people. The lamb of a lot of people as well. And I can, I can try to make that happen with more regularity.
My understanding is, Tom, we have an employee leaving, and I want to make sure on top of this and make sure we interview people that are leaving. So, that's why I recommended Mr. Dever or one of the select board members to do it with you, and if not with you, then with the member of the select board.
Yeah, I can certainly help create that capacity to do those because I think they're important. Tom, I can be with you. We can talk through this a little bit and come up with like a formal structure and things like that that we can bring back to the board as well. And then, just any employees. I think we've done, and I think the, my concern is that we just did a lot of work on compensation. We did a lot of work on that strategy, and then to have an employee leave, we just kind of want to have insights onto why, you know, what is it for the turnover, right, Mark? Is that what you're going with?
Correct.
Yeah, just get that insight.
Should the exit interview be with, well, if the person reported to Tom, honestly, if they're leaving, then it should be?
Should be with the board.
With the board.
Yep.
Okay, I'm totally supporting that.
Yeah, if it's somebody that doesn't report to Tom, but reports to no layer down, then they, then they do the interview with Tom.
I think they should do it with Tom and a member of the select board.
Tom and the board?
Yes.
Right. Something good. But sometimes you won't get an honest answer.
Yeah, Joe, let's talk about that.
Okay, and I have, I have a, and we want to do kind of like a call an experiment, but like the first exit interview, I have a structure I use, and, you know, the structures are always the same, and I can use that for the, you know, any, any employees that are recent. So, yeah, we went back and did this actually during the, well, I don't want to go down that road, but I think it's an important tool to use to get that insight. Any items not anticipated forty hours before the meeting?
Sorry, Joe, I have one other.
Oh, go ahead.
So, doing my due diligence for tonight's executive session, we got to make sure that we, it's supposed to be done yearly evaluations of the town manager.
Yeah.
Or his contract. So, we got to make sure we do that yearly upon hiring date. So, I'm a little behind on that.
I think that's across the board for contracts employed, right?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, we'll get that on the schedule. Anything else for future agenda? Okay, any items not anticipated forty hours before the meeting? Any remarks of the select board?
Yeah, I would just like to formally commend the members of the Dalton Fire Department, as well as the surrounding towns who provided mutual aid, the towns of Pittsfield, Savoy, Peru, Hinsdale, Lennox, Cheshire, and Lanesboro, for their response to the fire at 92 Central Ave on May 13th. It was an impressive response, and I'm just very grateful for dedicated men and women who serve in those departments and for preventing what could have been an even greater tragedy on that day. So, thank you.
There you go. Mr. Bishop?
Are we doing the Memorial Day parade this year?
Yes.
Are we supposed to be marching in it?
I have not received an invitation. I'll double check, but he said he was going to.
He may have been out of town on one of your multi-vacations.
Oh, shit. Slam it.
I didn't see an invitation in the mailbox or anything, so I don't know. It's just a standard letter that's in the pilot.
Okay, I'll check. I remember saying something.
I think it was like nine o'clock. Nine, was it nine? March 9:30?
Yeah, I think it was nine. I'll find it.
Yeah, Alyssa, if you can help us find out, and just send a note around, that'd be great. And there's the other remark I have, is that we have a lot of great businesses here in town. Another restaurant that's opening up, and I just had the, I don't know if I just attended too many shows, but the shows at the stationary factory have been phenomenal. So, just to see that entertainment and talk to people who are coming from as far as, as far away as like an hour, hour away to come see a show in Dalton. It's just really cool. So, kind of, you know, brings the town, brings the town together and supporting those other businesses nearby when they do show up. So, it's cool. Any other remarks to the select board? Okay, here and now, I have the announcements. The tax collector assessors, health agent, and building inspector have moved from town hall across the street into the old Berkshire Bank Building at 488 Main Street. With the rise in COVID cases, we encourage you to use drop boxes located outside of town hall for any payments, or you still can stop over to their new location. With the upcoming town operation of the transfer station, residents will still be able to use their old bags, and will be able to buy car permits and bag stickers both by check at the transfer station and on the town's website. The following committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers. ADA Committee, Beautification Commission, Conservation Commission, Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, Dalton Green Committee, Dalton Redevelopment Authority, Finance Committee, Stormwater Management Commission, Waste Management and Recycling Committee. If interested, please reach out to the town manager's office by calling 413-684-6111, extension 202. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, June 13th, 2022. Uh, June 6th, sorry, June 6th, 2022, 7:00 p.m. at the senior center with option for Zoom participation. If I can have a motion for executive session and not return to open session.
We go to executive session and not return to open session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Highway contract, town manager amendment, highway superintendent amendment, highway foreman, police chief, police sergeant, and also reason seven, to comply with act under the authority of any general special law or federal grant aid requirements, and consider prior executive session minutes from February 7th, 2022, February 14th, 2022, February 28th, 2022, and March 7th, 2022.
Second.
Motion second to go to executive session and not return to open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call board.
Roll call board, yeah. Britain?
Sher, Sher, Joseph Dever.
Yes.
Robert Bishop.
Yes.
Mike Schrau.
Yes.
Dan Esco.
Yes.
John Boyle.
Okay, all right. Well, we have a majority, so motion carries. Good night, Dalton. Thank you. Thank you all.
Tom, did you see, I sent you a link for the executive...